Good evening. I will call to order the Smyrna Municipal Planning Commission meeting for July 2, 2024. And to start the meeting off, if you'd stand, Mark's going to lead us in prayer and Amy has the pledge today.
Father in heaven, we come to you this afternoon, Lord, just thanking you for just another beautiful yet hot day here in Smyrna, Lord. We're so looking forward to some rain, Father, we need it so badly. Father, we ask that you look over us tonight, help us with discernment as we conduct the city's business, what's best for our town. Lord, go with the people to protect our town and work in the town, all of our citizens that are part of our town, Father. Just be aware of all of our lives and continue to watch over us, forgive us where we fail you, and continue to bless us as you have. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
High flag. High flag. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, in the municipal, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our next agenda item is citizens' comments, and I believe we do have several tonight. And just to remind everybody, we're reserving this for citizens that have signed up to address us. They have given at least 24 hours' notice prior to the meeting, and the speakers are going to be limited to three minutes. Any additional comments can be submitted in writing. Catherine, if you'll take care of the timekeeping and let's go ahead and move forward.
You have your list in front of you, I guess?
I do.
You should.
Thank you. Okay. Our first speaker tonight is Mark Briers. Mark, if you'd come up and give us, of course, your name and address and let us know if you live within the town of Smyrna or in Rutherford County.
Okay. My name is Mark Briers, as you said. I own the five-acre lot on the corner of Rock Springs and Cook Lane.
Okay, let's go ahead. Yeah, let's go ahead and give us your home address, please.
My home address, I live in Brentwood.
Okay. Go ahead, please.
Yes, so this is my first meeting, so I'm not sure of the normal routine, but I have three comments I would like to make. The first is, as I mentioned, I own the lot on that corner, and I want to make sure people are aware, I've received no public notice of any of these developments, Cook or Maple, or private notice for that matter, and they both affect my lot either directly or because of traffic flow, and I think that process definitely should be changed. You should be notifying residents. Second comment, I went to the meeting with the developer at the Hill residence, and I saw what I believe the same thing they're proposing tonight to you. I don't see how that can qualify as a transitional plan going from five-acre lots to much higher density. To me, lots with 55 feet across the front are not even vaguely close to a transition. I think there should be more in line with, you know, an acre or something like that as you transition into five. And my third comment, I know I'm keeping this very brief, more of a suggestion, and that is, I don't think you should have voting members on the planning commission also vote on the city council. That you're wearing, as I understand it in the structure here, two different hats. Oversimplifying, one is, do you meet the letter of the law? The other is, is this the right thing for the city of Smyrna? And human nature, what it is, wearing two hats doesn't always work, and citizens understand that, and you lose the appearance of being above reproach. And so I'd suggest for the future that you find ways to not have voting members on. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Don Hill. If you could give us name and address.
Yes, Don Hill, 5007 Rock Springs Road. Good evening. Tonight I'm speaking in opposition to Maple Farms development, as I've spoken to opposition at the town council meeting May 14, in which this development was denied approval by the town council for several reasons. The high density of the project, the road improvements needed, the aesthetic view from the road being too similar to Gwen Farms', and more importantly, the extreme encroachment of the proposed plan upon our acreage estate homes. At the conclusion of the town council meeting, the mayor specifically asked those in opposition to the development to work with century communities to rework the plan to create a gradual transition between Gwen Farms subdivision and our acreage estate homes. The purpose of creating this transition was not only to reduce the overall number of homes in the proposed development, but more importantly, to reduce the encroachment on our properties, most especially to reduce the number of homes along Lisa Reasonover's property line. The last plat map called for 15 homes along the length of her property. To that end, we have hosted two neighborhood meetings with century communities, along with Joe Morgan, representing the owners of Maple Farms. Joe explained their selling because of the encroachment of Gwen Farms has destroyed the enjoyment of their property, and they were enticed to sell because of the exorbitant over-market price offered. We bear no ill will toward the owners of Maple Farms for selling their property. We are simply requesting that the development of the Maple Farms property be considerate of the acreage homeowners adjacent to it. The Maple Farm owners enjoy the buffer of a church property between them and Gwen Farms', and they're selling because of that encroachment. We don't have a buffer between us and Maple Farms. We are not anti-development, but we do want thoughtful development that enhances the community rather than development that lowers our property values and destroys our enjoyment of our properties, as Gwen Farms development has already done to us and the owners of Maple Farms. The town council challenged century communities to create a gradual transition development plan that would mitigate the abrupt change from high density of Gwen Farms to the low density of our estate homes. A perfect example of a gradual transition is the Vineyard Community along Rock Springs Road, designed with side entrance garages, open spaces behind the homes, and setbacks greater than 20 feet. The current development plan for Maple Farms calls for about 12 homes along Lisa Reasonover's property line. This is unreasonable and clearly does not meet the gradual transition threshold. Your decision tonight creates consequences we must live with. Do not let Maple Farms development create the same encroachment upon our properties that Gwen Farms is doing to the Maple Farms owners. You have an opportunity to mitigate the damage the proposed Maple Farms subdivision will do to the enjoyment of our properties by mandating this development be designed as a gradual transition between Gwen Farms and our acreage estate homes. The plan before you does not meet the threshold. We are asking you to deny the Maple Farms request until an appropriate development plan has been submitted that meets our needs and the town council's request for a gradual transition between Gwen Farms and our estate properties. Thank you.
Okay. Ken Hill, please.
Ken Hill, 5007 Rock Springs Road. I'm speaking tonight in opposition of the Maple Farms development. This development was already denied by the city council on May 14. The most recent submitted plan does not meet the gradual transition the town council requested of century communities in their last meeting. We've met with century twice to work out a solution. The Vineyard development along Rock Springs Road was offered as an example of a gradual transition the town council is looking for, but for century communities, the opposition was too low-density. We propose an alternative to century that was opinion of stepped community. I draw your attention, the drawing provided with the red line on the marked lots. As you can see, the perimeter of the development would contain larger lots and homes and the visible adjoining properties, thus the reduced encroachment upon our properties. Additionally, these homes would be visible from Rock Springs Road, while the interior of the development would remain as it's drawn on the plat. This solution provides a buffer for the adjacent property owners and creates a gradual transition between the estate homes along Rock Springs Road and Maple Farms development. I draw your attention to the satellite view of the plat overlaid. Since Maple Farms is the extension of a development on Cook's Lane subdivision, century community has the opportunity to offer a stepped community within the entire development. Their plan on Cook's Lane subdivision already calls for a stepped community, options for larger homes, larger lots, be built within the subdivision, so it's not a radical deviation from what is already planned. Smyrna will soon have more starter homes than are needed. In a special meeting called June 5, the planning department indicated there's 11,925 homes in the pipeline. The homes were described as mainly starter homes with town homes and 55-plus communities. Several town council members have stated there's a need for mid-range homes in Smyrna, homes with larger lots built with 3,000 square foot or more. The Maple Farms development is a perfect place to create these larger homes and have a stepped community, rather than diminish them. This is an opportunity for y'all to have the stepped and the gradual transition that the council has asked for. We're not asking to stop the development, we are asking that let's do this in a transitional period where it doesn't look like it's a stark line like the Gwen Farms has done to what the Maple Farm homeowners are selling for. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Dennis Kitchen.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to speak on the issue of the Maple Farms.
Really quickly, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Dennis Kitchen, 5312 Cook's Lane.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you on the issue of the Maple Farms development. I'm very much opposed to the development as currently proposed. I'd like to make a few brief points, starting with the personal, moving to the more general. First, from a personal perspective, the development and the concurrent changes to roads and infrastructure will significantly damage my property, the property of several of my neighbors. We all stand to lose road frontage, mature trees, driveway access, other amenities. The beauty and the charm of our properties, as well as our property values, will suffer as a result, and I don't want to see myself or my neighbors damaged in that way. Second, the Maple Farms development and the Cook's Lane development to which it is tied will drastically change the character of the neighborhood in which we live. The density of these developments are totally out of character with the current beautiful, peaceful nature of this area. These developments in their present form will destroy the charm and rural character that attracted me, and I'm sure attracted many others, to Smyrna in the first place. If I had wanted to live in a more densely populated urban suburban environment, I would have moved to somewhere like Laverne, not to Smyrna. Third, I often hear people say that development is inevitable, there's no sense fighting it. I don't believe that is true. While some change, some development may be inevitable, the type of change is not. If development must come to this rural part of the city, and I'm not saying that it must, but if it does, the nature and scale of that development is up to us to determine. If the Maple Farms and Cook Lane projects move forward, for example, the density should be greatly reduced to better match the current local land use, perhaps even in a way that rezoning to PRD is not necessary. At the very least, development should be transitional, with larger homes gradually transitioning to smaller lots, as the council has asked. This would help to preserve the character of the area and let us avoid another jarring travesty like the Gwen Farms development. There has been literally no effort on the part of the city to inform local residents about these developments. The people from the neighborhood speaking here today learned about all of this quite by accident, and this has been very disappointing to me. I would wish for better communication from the city. On the flip side, my experience engaging with folks in city government on this issue has been very positive. These are clearly people of integrity who have the highest interests of the community in mind. I have found that they are truly willing to listen, to take our concerns to heart, and to do their best to find the best path forward, and this has been very heartening to me. So what kind of city do we want to create? Well, we in this room decide, the people right here make those decisions, and others in the community, we decide. We can't pass the buck to somebody else, it's up to us. So let's keep talking to each other and listen to our hearts and do our best to make wise decisions. The character of our city and our community depends on it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next we have John Lewis. John Lewis here. Again, name and address, sir.
Joe Morgan, 4701 Rock Springs Road, represent my mother, Morgan, Maple Farms, in favor of this zoning change. In May, we, you guys, approved the original concept that was presented. At that time, it was 127 lots on our property. Since the mayor and council meeting in May, we've gone back with century communities and made some changes. Now we're down to 107 lots, lower density. They have gone back and made some changes, gave some buffers to the adjoining neighbors. The adjoining neighbors have approximately about 400 feet property bound to us. The rest of our farm is, excuse me, I got it wrote down somewhere, so we're 3,528 feet. Gwen Farm, Neverland Farm. So that's a small portion with one adjoining neighbor to us. With that being said, originally, y'all approved the previous zoning. We made some changes from the comments of the mayor and council in May. Century communities, we've cut it down to 107 lots, made it smaller density, we've given 20-foot buffer to the adjoining neighbor. We've got a natural tree boundary line on the property that supports and blocks them for us with a lot of bamboo and native trees, and additional 20-foot with the city on Rock Springs Road. As far as the traffic on Rock Springs Road, and I've said this for years, part of the problem we have through the S curve there, simplest solution, the city put up two stop signs at Cook's Lane. We already got one there. Two simple stop signs there would deter the speeding going through that S curve to get to where Walden Road is, okay? With that being said, currently, in the corridor, what I call of Lee Road, Rocky IV Road, I-24, Rock Springs Road, Cook's Lane, according to my numbers, we have a total of 58.83 acres been approved and is currently being built right now, for a total of 2,263 homes. That is counting town homes, so that takes the density back down, I realize that, but they are same homeownership. So what we're asking for, we went from 127 to 107 lots, we went from the average of 7,500 square foot lots to 9,000 to 10,000 square foot lots since the last council meeting. I think we've done our due diligence in making changes, trying to satisfy the customer, I mean, our neighbors and the council.
That's your bell, sir.
Is that my time?
Your pizza's ready.
I'm sorry?
Your pizza's ready.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next we have Josh Miller. If you could give us your name and address, sir.
Yeah, Josh Miller, 4803 Rock Springs Road, one of the parcel owners on the Maple Farms proposed subdivision. So, good evening, planning commission members. I'm Josh Miller, and this planned residential development for Maple Farms was approved in May by your commission, but was met with opposition at the first council reading by surrounding residents of the area of Smyrna. I, along with all of them and our family, when we moved here over 40 years ago, thought we would live there and enjoy the serenity of Rock Springs Road area. But it wasn't long until the high-density housing came along and changed the entire neighborhood. We soon discovered we were not going to be the last ones to move out there. All housing compared to ours at the time, back then when all this started, was high-density housing, so we know how they feel. We learned to be good neighbors through that and embraced the progress. And having said that, the developers, century homes, I feel like they've gone above and beyond to address the concerns of these new and surrounding residents with not one, but two meetings with them, far more than what other developers have done in the past. By leaving the natural buffers and adding to the natural space of the new plan, along with lowering the density to 107, I feel that shows century homes wants to be good neighbors of the community. That's all I have, and I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you, sir. Lisa Reasonover.
Lisa Reasonover, 4821 Rock Springs Road, Smyrna. I'm speaking in opposition to the rezoning of Maple Farms, as we had previously addressed all our concerns at the council meeting at the last rezoning request, and I'm echoing what my neighbors have already said. The concerns have not changed. While I do appreciate century homes and being the developer, they met with us on several occasions, and they have revised their plan from 125 to 107. And that does alleviate the proposed 19 homes against my driveway, but it still leaves 11 or 12, which is still a large number of homes to be running down my driveway. I don't think it meets the gradual transition threshold that the town council and the mayor had suggested that they wanted to ease the development, the transition between Gwen Farms and our acreage properties. The other thing that I want to just make a point about is, yesterday was the first day that I received anything in my mailbox about this rezoning request that was taking place tonight. That's really not enough time for anybody to prepare to speak, and I think it's unacceptable practice to not give the homeowners adequate notice, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, we have Robert Stevens.
He's not here.
Not here? Okay. All right, this closes the citizens' comment portion of the agenda then, and we will move on to the approval of the minutes of the June 6, 2024 meeting.
If we can, I'd like for Mr. Page, Mr. Briers had asked a question about having voting members from the planning commission, also serving on the council. Will you address that and explain to him the reasoning behind that and how that's structured?
Yes, that's for every planning commission in the state, so that's a state statute, Title 13, requires that it's mayor or the mayor's designated, and then as part of the council, and then there's also one council member that's chosen from the entire body of the council, so.
So I just wanted him to kind of understand, that's the reasoning behind it? It's not rigged that way? It's by statute?
Okay. Okay. All right, approval of the minutes of the June 6, 2024 meeting. Counselor, are the meeting minutes in order?
In order, Mr. Moore.
Any questions or comments from the commission? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the minutes.
I have a motion to approve the minutes from Miranda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes of the June 6, 2024 meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Our next item is a public hearing. It's a mittel deadlines for sketch plats, preliminary plats, and final plats, Article 3, Sections 3-103, 3-104, and 3-105.
Yeah, I'll briefly talk about that, this amendment, before you have the public hearing. This is, it's three sections of the subdivision regulations that we're talking about changing. It's the same change in all three places, just as it affects three different types of plats. This, all it really is doing is it's changing our deadline date for submittals, which is currently 17 days prior to the meeting, to change it to 24 days prior to the meeting. It would give staff an additional week to review items that get submitted for your review, as well as get comments out to the developers, their engineers, and then to resubmit back to us. Gives them additional time as well. Also provide just more time within, prior to packets being delivered to you all and all, just for us to be able to have more time to review and get everything together. So that is what the proposed change is. You do need to have a public hearing, and then afterwards you can vote on it.
Any questions from the commission concerning this proposed change? And seeing this is a public hearing, I'll ask if there's anybody here to speak for or against this. Hearing none, I will close the public meeting, and I will go to the commission for a vote.
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mark. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Miranda. Further discussion? All those in favor of approving the mittel deadlines as outlined, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The mittel deadline changes are approved.
And just for clarification, this would go into effect for the September planning commission's mittel cycle.
Okay.
So not next month, but the following month. Just for your information.
Let's see here, our next item is subdivision regulation amendment.
That's what we just reviewed on.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Oh, where? I'm sorry, read that twice. Why did it look like it appeared twice here? Okay, anyway, on old business, annexation, zoning, and plan of service requests. Joe Haddix has requested a deferral for three months, and this is in reference to Bill France Road and Interstate 840, annexation, and I-2, C-2, and R-3 zoning requests.
Yeah, this is something we've seen several times now, they have requested another deferral from you all tonight, for three months this time.
Okay, with a requesting this deferral?
At some point, we need to vote on it, but I mean, I know there's some other things going on out there that kind of, I think there's going to be some in conjunction with some other things, so I think I'm okay with the deferral.
For this time?
For this time, yeah.
Questions for Kevin? Do I have a motion?
I move to defer for three months.
I have a motion to defer for three months from Amy. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the requesting deferral for three months signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion has been deferred. Our next item is Kyle Griffin. He's also requesting a deferral for one month in reference to 140 Queen Cliff Court, annexation and PRD zoning request.
This is the request that had quite a bit of discussion last month, well, prior to the meeting, we had a lot of discussion from some of the neighbors in that area, and they did request a deferral last month to this month, and they have requested another additional one-month deferral.
Questions for Kevin concerning this deferral request? Hearing done, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the deferral for one month.
I have a motion made to defer, to approve the deferral for one month. Do I have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor of the request to defer for one month signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This request has been approved. We are now on to the last item of old business, which is a final plat, Seward's Landing, Allen Seward Way and Pilot Place, owner developer Seward's Landing Partners LP, Equitable Property Company.
Yeah, this is a plat that you did see last month. It was deferred a month at the developer's request. They were working through some changes that they were going to be making to some of the road layout a little bit, and so they did ask for a deferral, and so it's this, seven lots as part of the Seward's Landing PUD there on Sammerly Parkway and Motlo College Boulevard. We had several comments, most of which were standard comments, really, one through, really one through seven, all really standard comments. We want to keep those. There were three items that they do still need to address, just provide some additional dimensions on one of the drainage easements, just so that we know, we're clear on where the easement actually begins and ends. There was a fire item that needed to be shifted from the median to the outside of the right away, and then they need to show some of the existing utilities that aren't shown currently that are on Motlo Boulevard and Sammerly Parkway. So there's 10 comments total. Staff would recommend approval with all of those comments still remaining.
Okay. Questions for Kevin concerning this final plat?
Is this the entry road that presently exists off of Motlow?
No, it's actually going to get moved a little bit, I think. And in the entrance, it's going to be a little bit different place off Sammerly from where that, there's a little bit of a kind of a pull off there on Sammerly also already. It's going to be changed a little bit.
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
A move to approve with staff comments.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor of approving this final plat signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This plat is approved. We're now on to new business. Our first item is annexation zoning and plan of service request, Adam Lawrence, 6304 Lee Road, annexation and PRD zoning. Catherine, please mark, mark as not participating or voting.
Not participating.
This is an annexation request for a portion of a parcel. The address to the parcel is 6304 Lee Road. It's, total parcel is about 23 and a half acres. They've requested 17.42 acres of it to be annexed. It is directly between an existing subdivision there, the Buckingham Hills, Woodcrest, that whole area there, to the east, and then to the west is a subdivision that was annexed and approved several months ago. This is the same developer, and this is proposed essentially as kind of the next, or an additional phase to that, the existing approved development. It is requested to be, have a PRD zoning attached to it. There's 47 lots proposed within this PRD on the 17.42 acres. Surrounding zoning, again, as I stated, is PRD, there's on both sides of it, the Buckingham Hills and the Hidden Springs is what it's called on the west, as well as the Olive Branch PUD on the south side of Lee Road, and then RM in Rutherford County. Land use plan would support medium density, single family in this area. There are no roads affected on the major thoroughfare plan affected by this request. Comment number four is kind of just an informational comment. They are extending an existing road called Napa Valley Drive into this development and connecting it to what's just proposed in their first phase of this. So it's going to necessitate a name change in that first phase over on the west side. It's not a big deal to do, just want to bring it to their attention. This area does lie, from a water service standpoint, within Consolidated Agility District's boundary, and so they would have to comply with all their requirements in addition to ours of the rest of water. The CUD has indicated they do not have adequate fire flow in this area, which is the same situation as to the property to the west, so they are going to have to sprinkle these homes in order to pour, do some off-site upgrades to meet the fire flow requirements. Again, this is very similar to what's been approved to the west as far as lot size, homes, type of homes, all those setbacks, all those things. They're going to be all, would be all developed together as far as open space and HOA and all that would all be combined together, so. I believe that's all that I've got.
Kevin, you mentioned this is consistent with surrounding zoning.
With the surrounding PRDs on both sides, it's the same, like in the same, roughly the same density, the same size homes, all that, lot sizes.
And what is, what's proposed? Does it meet our requirements for a PRD? Other questions?
What road does this subdivision, what main road will the traffic be dumping out on?
Lee Road would be the main one because it would, kind of see better on this, the access to it will be from Lee Road through the adjoining development to the west, or from the adjoining development to the east. Now, of course, the development to the east also would connect to Rock Springs through the Woodmont, Montgomery Way area. Most of these folks, just because of the nature where the houses would be, I'm sure would most likely probably be more inclined at least to come forward to Lee Road, I would
Other questions?
Two questions and concerns. Could you talk about the lot size on the east side of the development and how that winds up with the existing homes?
So I think the larger lots, I think you can kind of see it a little bit, are kind of on the southern side, near where there's just kind of an existing, I don't know if it's a stream or just like a wet weather conveyance on that south side there. The lots, all the other lots are the, the, the smaller lots, the more narrow lots. As far as how they compare to the lots directly to the, to the west, or the east, rather, I don't, I can't remember what that PRD, what that lot width is in there. Just by looking at them, these are more narrow than those. Those are probably all 55 or 60 feet wide, and those in this area, at least on this portion of that PUD, I think a 45-foot lot minimum width. And there's, like I said, there's some larger lots on the southern end of this development, on the west side.
But we're just looking at the request to the PRD right now, correct?
Yeah, but as far as the comparison with the lots, I think it's, I just, I misunderstood the question as far as what these, how these lots would compare to the ones directly east. And so they're, they would be somewhat smaller.
But if we were to approve this today, this would be with the expectation of a site plan more or less in conformance with what we're looking at.
Yes.
I guess the other question and concern, there's a mature tree buffer, tree line, I guess, on the east side of the property. Are you aware of any efforts to try to maintain that as a buffer?
There's nothing shown there. There is some, quite a bit of trees on the north side and the south side that they're leaving alone, but there's nothing on that east side. Port, portion of that is some trees, some of it doesn't have as many trees, but on the, but there's not, they're not showing anything on that side, no.
I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity to have some mature backyard trees there when they develop the property.
I mean, that's, the buffer is here, they might can answer that question.
Are you, are you representing this development? If you give us your name and address, and I'll let you answer those questions.
Yeah, Wes McGill with David Wickley Homes, 206 Gothic Court in Franklin, Tennessee. To answer your question, yeah, we're aware of the mature trees there and would like to keep as many of them as we can, so we're working with our engineers to try to design that, to save as much as we can. Unfortunately, some of the drainage that's coming off the existing subdivision is going to have to force us to raise some of those lots a little bit, so I think we're going to have to lose some of them, but we're going to do our best to keep as many as we can, especially around Napa Valley. They get a little bit more mature there. And then additionally, there's that stream that Kevin discussed on the south side, all of that is going to stay. From a tree perspective, the existing landowner today is retaining the front acreage. We're going to build a home from there, so those trees will all remain, providing a natural buffer from Lee Road, so.
I had a question for you, I mean, and I'm just kind of eyeballing this here. Whereas some of the lots on Q appear to be wider, it appears that the ones that will be on Napa Valley are deeper. So are we in essence pretty close to the same square footage?
Yeah, it's a very similar lot size. It is a little bit more narrow, but it's the same square footage, or similar square footage.
And we'll be meeting our requirements as far as side setbacks, correct? Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Okay. Anything else?
I guess one other question, I think about it. Has there been any input from the neighbors to the east?
We have not. We have talked with one gentleman. We put the signs up last, late last week and did send the letters out. We do, just to address that, because that came up, we do send letters. We don't send them until after we know for certain that something's going to be on the agenda, because I don't want to send letters to, and give people information that turns out being false. So hopefully moving the deadlines back will give us a little more time to know that earlier, and so we can start sending some letters out earlier. But, so that's, so as far as, I don't know how many, maybe, may or may not ever see those, but we did send letters to everyone. Again, I did talk to one gentleman who had some questions and was wanting to know what was going on, but he did not provide any positive or negative kind of feedback. He was just wondering what was happening behind this property, so.
Okay. Other questions or comments? I will then entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with staff comments.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor of approving this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. We are now on to our next item. It is a rezoning request, and this is Kyle Griffin, 4701 Rock Springs Road, rezoning R1 to PRD.
Yes, this is a rezoning request. It's five tracts of land totaling 40.1 acres, currently zoned R1, requested to be rezoned to a PRD. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1 and PRD, which is the Gwyn Farms and Cooks Lane PRDs in town, and R1 and Laverne. The land use plan would support medium density, single family development in this area. The major thoroughfare plan does designate Rock Springs Road as a collector, and the required minimum right of way through this road is 30 feet from the center line and is shown to be dedicated with this plan. The request of PRD is for 107, single family lots. Required fire flow is typical there. The amenity building may have a greater requirement, depending on the capacity of that building and type of construction, so that's relatively standard. The, we did ask for a couple comments, things, we did ask them to provide the size of the onsite and offsite sewer mains. I think that was something utilities had asked for. And then we did, one of the, on some of the architectural elevations, there was a comment that was added on one of the lot sizes and the homes, but not on the other one, regarding the HVAC units being screened from the right of way, if they do face the public right of way. And so we asked them to add that so that it would apply to all those lots, not just some of them, so. There are some offsite water improvements that are going to be required for this development to meet fire flow, and so that's something the CUD, I've talked with them, the developer about, and has indicated what's needed, and just, I don't know, I can't recall exactly what that is, but there is some offsite improvements that they're going to have to do to meet fire flow from the, from the water side of the coin. This is a project, as you heard earlier, this is a project that was looked at a couple months ago. The council did turn that request down. This is, has, there have been some revisions made, and as far as the density being reduced, as well as some other changes, and so the developer, the representation here can talk about that, as far as, there's several things, but I'll let them kind of talk about what they've done there. But it is, it was 125 lots before, this is 107, so it has, I think the density is about 2.6 now, or 2.7. I think it was closer to three before, or just over three, so that's the change as far as density per acre.
So it's about 2.67?
Okay.
Yeah. So it was a little over, just over, three or just over three before, so as far as total acreage and number of lots, so. The basic road layout and whatnot is essentially the same as what was, you saw before.
Questions for Kevin?
Kevin, I know we had a couple people speak. Tell me again, or describe to me again, how the lots that border or miss recent owners' property, what was it before? Was it, there was 18 or 19, as I recall?
Yeah, I can't, it was more, I think there was, I think that's what it was.
And so now it's?
There's, there's a...
I heard the number 12, but I counted more, so I'm just trying to get my head around what that number is.
Well, it's basically, it's lot 43 to lot 53, so that's 11, and then you have lot 55, which is, kind of goes around. There's a, there's a partial that's separated out there, I think that's caught out of the cemetery.
Okay.
So I think lot 55 would be the 12th one.
And the 20-foot buffer, talk to me about that.
The 20-foot buffer is shown behind lots 43 to 53.
Those 10?
Yeah, well, 11.
11, sorry.
Yeah, 11, those 11 lots. There is a 20-foot buffer shown. It's an existing tree line that would basically be undisturbed.
So that is the tree line?
Yeah, that's that area. The 20 feet from the existing property line to the proposed new lot line would be basically essentially left alone as a buffer.
Is there a reason why the buffer doesn't continue through lot 55?
Next question.
That's, there's nothing, there's no reason why it couldn't, but it is not shown there,
What did the lot size average, in your opinion? I mean, what's the lot size difference now compared to what, I made some notes, and I just want to kind of ask those questions.
Yeah, I think they've got it on here. I think it's breakdown.
I guess what was it before and what is it now, kind of thing? It may be an equation that you weren't ready for.
Yeah, I don't, I know they've got, I don't have that information right here in front of me, so I apologize for that.
And if I, just a request to the chair, I would like to be real specific about what we're looking at now versus what we're looking at, or what we looked at previously. What are the exact changes?
Yeah, you know, and it may be appropriate at this point, as a representative for the developer here. Could you come up, please, and give us your name and, or names, and let's talk specifically about the changes that are, that have been submitted now versus what we looked at before.
Sure thing. My name is Trey Woodruff, 1512 Sugarwood Road.
Kyle Griffin, 2305 Pine Avenue.
Okay. I believe you heard Matt's question.
Sure. To address the 20-foot buffer, for sure, it could, that cemetery blocked out, we could run that 20-foot buffer on the other side of the cemetery as well. We'd have no problems agreeing to that. Some of the other changes, kind of just starting at the top, we did work with the neighbors. We tried to take as much input. We did meet with them multiple times. 19 lots was what the original backing up to Lisa's property. We have reduced that down, depending on the cemetery count, it's either 10 to 12, but we have reduced that significantly. We took what was a 50-foot wide lot, we've increased it to a minimum of 55, and it goes up to 60 and 65, I'm sorry, from 45 to 50, 55s, 60s, and 65s. The old lot square footage was roughly 5,400 per lot, and in the new count, we averaged 9,300 square feet, the smallest of which is 6,200, but we do go up to a 17,000 square foot lot. So we have a mixture of different product types and different lot sizes within the community. We flipped the entry road so that we reduced the number of homes' rears that would face the right of way. We really tried to listen to the feedback we got from the council, showing the fronts of homes, there'll be one side that will do additional tree buffering, landscaping to cover that side, but now, as you come into the city, you'll see the fronts of the homes instead of the rears. We also moved the amenity center further down, which, you know, will also help with that look. We've also gone ahead and agreed and... We've also gone ahead and agreed, and we put it in the packet here, to do much more material changes than are required in the standard PRD. I think, do you have that slide? Or I can read them off if you'd like?
I don't have it, I'll pick it up.
Okay. So 50% of the homes are proposed to have a 25% brick or stone, 75% cement board, border batten or shake siding. 50% of the homes are proposed to have at least 51% brick or stone or greater, with 49% cement board or batten or shake siding. Again, trying to break up the look of all the different homes as you go through the community. On the side elevations, we're agreeing to a 36-inch of brick or stone on all sides above the foundation, right now.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
So we'll do a 36-inch water table on the sides of all the, of all the homes, not just doing the foundation in stone or brick. We'll take it up 36 inches above the foundation line, which will give a nice side yard appearance anywhere you're looking. We're also agreeing on the rear elevations that 75% of the lots, or any of the lots that face any kind of public right-of-way, will have undulating elevations, whether that's a covered porch, or a covered deck, or an interior deck or porch, trying to give a differentiation between those homes that do face, have a rear that faces any kind of public right-of-way. Goal there, again, is to try to break up some of the things and comments we heard back from the Gwyn Farms, so that as you look at the rears of these houses, you actually see architectural elements. On the 12 homes that back up to Lisa, those are 160 feet deep now, at minimum. Some of them go up to 170 feet, pushing that road further away from her property. We really tried to get those homes as far away as we could, bending the road back from that property line. So that'll give even more site corridors and variations from her house, trying to get as much density away from it as we can.
View sheds were a very important component of these revisions. Not only did we look at the prep just going eastbound and westbound on Rock Springs Road, we were being mindful of the view sheds from the neighbors' homes. We went as far as to even go into the Cooks' development and pull houses further away from the neighboring properties. We were 350 feet away, now we're closer to 550 feet away from their homes. I provided staff with some exhibits that kind of show view sheds along Rock Springs Road with existing vegetation in the conveyances today, plus supplemental plantings. We will have very limited view sheds up into the homes to look at the enhanced elevations that they are committing to. Also, I think you may have mentioned, along the 20-foot buffer, we are planning to supplement that existing tree mass with evergreen-type trees, the entire extent of that, that buffer.
Same, same length as what Matt Carver asked?
Yes.
And can you, can you detail further what that buffer looks like between 55, 56, 57, 58, in between those lots that back up directly to Rock Springs?
So that, because we don't know exactly what the road improvements are going to be on Rock Springs, the comment asked us to dedicate 5 feet, so a 60-foot total right-of-way width. Because of the uncertainty, we went ahead and dedicated 30 feet. So there's already 25, we're dedicating 30 on top of that, so that the city can build whatever road improvements they need to on Rock Springs Road. Currently, there's tree mass there that we do not intend to, that we intend to preserve as much of as we can.
And that change is, was brought forth due to the comments that city council had regarding the road that was coming through?
That's correct.
Okay.
I did also want to point out, there's about 30% of the homes now that are quarter acre lots, vineyard, vineyard community was brought up. Those homes are quarter acre lot. So we have provided transitions in the most critical places on this land plan, adjacent to the neighbors. As you move west, we get larger. Right up on the road, Rock Springs Road, those first six lots are all quarter acre lots. They're bigger homes, bigger lots, bigger homes. Which is consistent with vineyard.
How many acres are left undisturbed? I'm looking at the plan here. 14, 12 or 14, was it?
That sounds about right.
12.82.
Yeah.
Is what's proposed to be open space.
I know the council, it's, you know, we met and we're looking at ways to improve some of our lot dimensions, some of our densities. We're still, we're processing through all that stuff right now. To the question I had about the open acreage with a PRD, it allows that space for amenities, or it allows that space for nature. But some of the questions that came up in that development meeting were, what's the true density of a PRD when you're not using maybe 12 or 14 acres? That's not really how we've ever governed it before. We've always taken the yield that comes from the acreage and calculate how many homes or lots per acre that you're looking at that. So I don't know where that's going. I don't know what the council's flavor is going to be with that yet, but we'll be meeting again. Just so everybody knows, we're meeting again in mid-July, and we're massaging some of this as we go. But to Tim's question, or maybe it was somebody just brought up the vineyards. That's an R3 subdivision, as I recall, is it not?
Yes.
R3 lots are?
10,000 square feet, minimal, yeah.
So if you're telling me your lots that border Miss Reasonover's property, are those lots, is that what I'm hearing from you? Are they the same like the vineyards' size lots?
That's correct.
Within a couple hundred feet, maybe?
Quarter acre.
Give or take?
They're a quarter acre.
Are those conducive to side acre floor plans? I'm sorry, side entrance floor plans, I'm sorry.
These are, these are deeper than they are wider, whereas the vineyard's white and shallow. And so I don't know that each of them would allow for a side load, we'd certainly do a study on it.
The reason I'm asking the question, from a buffering standpoint, the vineyard seems to be a satisfying type of product to the neighborhood, especially to Miss Reasonover. Is there a way potentially, as a, as the buffers go along her property, to then also make those lots wider instead of deeper, not affecting her with their buffers though, right? I don't know how you do this, you're engineers, I'm just dumb. But if we can find a way to soften that border to her property and put some nice brick side entry garage homes along through there, maybe that's a way to find a balance here. I mean, the council, if this gets through tonight, it goes back to council again, but I want to make sure everybody in the audience understands what we do from a planning perspective. Mr. Byers, you'll appreciate this, because the reason we have council members on the planning body is for that balance of communication and understanding what the council may or may not want. They'll take the end product and decide if they like it or not. I say they, we're some of them, right? So we're trying to get in front of that a little bit by finding the right product where the sellers can sell their property and the landowners can feel satisfied about what buffers them and how they transition. I heard the word transition quite a bit. Can you talk to me about how that may or may not be possible with the way you've got this plan now?
Sure. At this point, to increase the width of the lots, in order to maintain that road being as far away as possible, that's how the lots became skinny. If we were to move the road closer, which would then bring more traffic closer to that border, you could get wider lots and try to make up the density in another area, but then you'd be sacrificing putting the road and everything closer to the property. Our goal is to get the homes as far away from her property as possible, so we led to a skinnier, but a longer lot.
Which gives more properties a longer property.
Does give more properties.
Right, so are we, I don't know if it's the chicken or the egg here, do you like the wider, not as deep lots, or do you like the deeper buffered lots? I mean, Miss Reasonover, I'm not asking you to speak, but if you could nod, you know, kind of tell me what, you know, if you like a deeper lot with homes further away from your property line with a buffer, that's a narrower lot. But if it can be, if it can be done where you're widening that buffer strip and getting nice side entry, maybe brick, you know, I, I'm not asking you to tell, necessarily tell me what you want, but I think I need to know. I think it would help everybody if we kind of knew, they've met with you twice, and we're really just trying to find a way to make, make it work for everybody.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I just like the buffer. I'm, I want the buffer as much as I want.
So you don't care if your neighbor has got a side entry garage or a front entry garage, per se?
She wants the buffer.
You want the buffer?
Not really, because I'm going to see the backup everybody.
Okay. So, and you're down to about 10 or 12 now, and it was, you got a cemetery in there, right?
Correct.
And then, so you were at 19?
Yeah.
So it sounds like they've done a lot to try to soften that a little bit, but I'm trying to make sure you're buffered somewhat. I mean, I don't know, I hear everybody trying, and we are too. But please understand, as a planning commission, we try to stay real consistent up here, and when we get off of our consistency, we're sort of stepping off into left field a little bit. So it's up to us to deliver consistency to the, to the council members, if we so decide to approve. That's what is up to us to do. So I think last time, we had a proposal to send it forward to the council, council sort of beat it up pretty good, and here we are again. So from a consistency standpoint, I'd just like to try to find a way to send this back to the council by us being consistent, and then let the council decide if there's any way to either find favor in it or not find favor in it. But we don't make that final decision here. We're just really trying to look at consistency as more, as much as anything.
Okay. Any other questions for either Trey or Kyle? No? Charles, you have something?
Yeah, I'm still trying to understand the buffer. You're going to maintain the existing tree line, and then you're going to add a row of pine trees to that?
Evergreen trees, as well, committing. I'm going to let an arborist tell us what's going to grow best.
Those ones that get fluffy and all that.
And that's up, that's from, I'll be specific here. Right, that's the whole property line, 55 up through 43.
Yes, ma'am.
And on Rock Springs, is there any landscaping treatment along Rock Springs?
We had proposed to do an additional landscaping if you look next to lot 1. There's a buffer there as well. We're going to do additional landscaping there to keep the side and the rear of that one home invisible from the road. We can certainly add additional behind those lots at the end of that cul-de-sac. There's already existing trees there. It is also an elevation change, it is a bit higher than the road as you drive by. So we weren't planning to add additional screening at that point. If the city decides to change that roadway, we may have to work in the CD process to come up with some additional buffers.
In the property to the east where the church is, what is that, between it and Gwyn Farms?
That's actually Gwyn property, I believe. The Gwyn property backs up to this development and wraps around the church.
So those trees are not, that, they're not, Gwyn Farms is not developing there? That's...
Right, that's part of their open space area, yes.
So I guess I'm going to ask that question again. Does wider feel better with buffers, or does depth feel better with buffers?
Well, it'd be wider with less buffer.
If it's wider, how far off is it going to be?
We'll have to do a full study, but the road would come back closer to where it was in the original layout.
Probably 40 feet.
We'll keep that 20-foot buffer no matter what, but the distance between the property line and the back of those homes would definitely decrease.
Yeah, to me, that sounds like it pushes the homes closer to your property line.
Maybe two less. I don't want to commit to that.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm going to study that a little bit more.
What does he have to mean? Deeper. And that's what's showing now, right?
Right. Okay. Anything else? All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks.
Thank you all, too.
All right, are there any additional questions or comments from the commission to staff on this?
At the council meeting, I thought HG had an issue with Rock Springs Road and this development. Do you think that's been addressed, or is that...
It sounds like to me, and I'll let Charles speak to that, it sounds like we're reserving enough area for potential right-of-way if the Rock Springs needed to be widened. I'll let you speak.
All right, we're looking at that, and I'm going to be beaten with Kyle and my designer. Of course, right now, we have Cooks Lane.
Under design. We do not have anything on Rock Springs currently. I met with the neighbors Friday night to get their input on what they're looking for on Rock Springs, and I'm going to take that back to my design team and work with Kyle and see how much of that we need to get in there and how much buffer we're leaving. So we're looking at what kind of roadway we're going to put through there.
With what was described tonight, do you feel like there's enough room to work with here?
Yes, because we're, I'm looking at leaving it a two-lane and just adding shoulders. Since you're going to be between a bluff and the creek, there's no need to put a center turn lane through there. And also, that being narrower, the neighbors feel that will help dampen the traffic speed. And then one of the neighbors, you know, talked about we could, on that S curve, come into his property more and do a three-to-one, try to get that slope out, that we can come that direction, and that way we stay out of Miss Reasonover's trees there, we can go to the other side and take that, a little bit more of that S curve out. But still leave it a little down, so we don't have the traffic speed coming through.
Okay.
I know HG talked about stability of Rock Springs Road, you know, because particularly on the other side, you know, we've had some issues.
Right.
With what they've left here, do you feel like the stability, you could maintain or enhance the stability of Rock Springs Road with what?
We have done repairs out there on it, and those seem to be holding for now. When we come back in, we will definitely, if we go into a full design redo of the road, we would check all the subgrade again and find and see if those areas are holding and if they need to be, you know, deepened. Because I know up on Gwyn Farms, when we got into there, we were digging six or seven feet deep, putting stone back in to stiffen it up in sections. And then other sections were, were fine, as just with the existing base. So that would all be checked out as we move into that area, if we go into full design, redesign of the road.
Okay. Thank you, Charles. Anything else? Then I will ask for a motion.
I make a motion to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, and that is to include Matt's...
Yeah, lengthening the buffer to include all the lots, all the way down to Rock Springs Road, and lot 55 there.
Okay. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second. Further discussion?
No, but I will add, based on consistency, trying to solve that buffering zone is my biggest thing, and I think we've worked towards something tonight that feels better. It's going to go to council if it gets through here again, and so, but from a consistency standpoint, from a planning body, I think we're doing it right.
Just one final thing from me before we vote. Kevin, does this meet our regulations?
Current regulations, yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, motion and a second. All those in favor of approving this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. We are now on to our next item, which is Hollins Head Land LLC, northeast corner of Gamble Lane and Enan Springs Road West, rezoning R1 with ESO to PRD slash C2 with ESO.
Yes, this is a rezoning request. It's at the corner of Gamble Lane and Enan Springs Road West. It's about 6.24 acres of property. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1, R3, and C2. The land use plan for this area, this is one of our 24 gateway character areas because of the whole floor and planned interchange at I-24 and Enan Springs. It would support kind of a mix of uses and services, kind of local and regional in scale, such as hospitality, retail, restaurant, multifamily uses. such as hospitality, retail, restaurant, multifamily uses. The major thoroughfare plan does designate Enan Springs Road West as a minor arterial and Gamble Lane as a collector. Adequate right-of-way does exist for Enan Springs Road West, but right-of-way may be required to be dedicated for Gamble Lane. This proposed PRD is for thirty-seven townhouses. The required minimum fire flow is a little bit higher here because there is a commercial building. The, the, the area in the corner, which is acre, roughly an acre of property, is proposed to be C2. So the remaining 6.24, or 5.24 acres roughly is the, for the townhomes would be located in the PRD zoning. But because of that, again, that commercial, how partial, there is a higher fire flow requirement for a commercial building. A Type C buffer is required on the northern and eastern property lines because it does abut existing single-family zoning. The developer has proposed, in lieu of a Type C buffer, to do a Type A landscape buffer with a fence in that area, in lieu of the fifteen-foot required type landscape buffer on those two property lines. We did ask them, there's, they did have, just to ensure parking not, and cars not being partially into the, the private roadways, show a thirty-foot, eight-foot setback from the edge of pavement, and they had added a note to that effect. Because this is in our overlay, our, the Enan Springs overlay, there's a, are some requirements for color palette, landscaping, lighting, buffering, and screening, and those type of things. We would review those in detail when the site plan comes in, if this rezoning is approved. And then the fire department did make a comment regarding the, all, that all sides of the building would have to be within a hundred and fifty feet of reach for them. They did add a note to that effect, so that, again, that's something we would look at very closely if and when this is approved and the site plan is submitted, so. And this is, it's thirty-seven townhomes on, on the acreage. It's shown the five-point-two acres or so. These are toward the, the back of your packet there. These, they are seventeen-hundred-and-fifty square foot minimum in size, and largely brick, and some, some hardy, but largely brick townhomes with two-car garages is what is proposed, so. There would be, well, just to hit the access points, too, just because it's, it is Enan Springs Road. It is a right-in, right-out only on Enan Springs Road because of the median there, but they would have access at two locations to Gamble Lane as well, so. And that's what I have.
Kevin, is there enough commercial allotted to this, knowing what the plans are as far as Enan Springs Road West? I thought, and I'm trying to think in relation to where, you know, the schools that's been approved, and, you know, some other businesses, and what we anticipate as far as some potential... Am I thinking it right, ma'am? Yeah?
Yeah, you are. The, the property on the other side of Enan Springs Road, there where Big Sun Lane intersects with Enan Springs Road, you have a couple of properties that, properties on the, on the north side of Big Sun Lane are, that was part of a PUD that has basically like a C4-type uses allowed. And then I think some of the Sundell area there has a C2 zoning on the front edge, kind of between Enan Springs and, and that area. Some of that is, I think, still has residential zoning. Thank you. I think that's all, the only commercial zoning I can think of, at least. Well, as you go further in towards, towards Old Nashville Highway, the Sims Ridge Development, there was some, some commercial zoning on the front edge there.
Never happened at school. Did not come back.
You know, they got, everything was approved, and I know they found a location, they're, I think they're renting some space right now, because they were, they're, they're gonna be open, they're opening this fall, so. I think they figured out they weren't gonna be able to be, to be, well, to be completed for construction at minimum, but I don't know what, what's happened since that time, you know, since they've been approved. Except I do know they have found a location, I don't know exactly where, but they did have found a location that they're gonna begin operation and rented, rented space from there.
Do we have any other townhome projects in this area?
There is the Cedar Creek project, which is, if you look on that map, on the very, that northern piece there, this is a townhome project. I think there's eighty or so in there, some more acreage, but...
That's the one by the school?
That's the one by, by the, by the Rocky Fork School.
I think Ryan did that. Was Ryan?
That's who ended up building it, yes. And then you have the Talia Trace project, which is, of course, is at Old Nashville Highway and Ro, and, and Enan Springs, Rocky Fork area. And then on the other side of the interstate, the Greystone project has a mix of townhomes and single-family in it.
Well, Mark had talked about consistency prior to this, and so I just wanted to make sure that... But the other ones are, well, the ones at Cedar Creek, are those all towns, or is that a mix?
Those are all towns.
What was the acreage there? Do you remember?
I can't recall exactly. I'm thinking it was eighty or so units, I think. It seems like it was in that ten-to-twelve acre, seems like. I'm not, but I'm not 100% sure.
Those were built under our old regulations, I think. Those driveways are...
I think those were about three years, two, three years ago.
Well, yeah, driveways, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, the parking.
From a parking standpoint and all that, yes, they were for sure under the old parking requirements, yes. And these would be, they've got four service spaces in addition to the two-car garages on these, plus the guest parking as well.
What are we looking at from a density perspective here?
It's seventy-four units on five acres, is it not?
It's thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven on 6.2.
Oh, okay, I read this wrong.
It's actually on, 6.24 acres is the total acreage. It's a, it's about 5.2 acres.
For the actual residential.
Yeah, so it's, what's that, end of the, thirty-seven, roughly seven.
Seven per?
Yeah. Seven-point-one.
Essentially, it's R6, I guess.
As far as, from a, if you were looking at a straight zoning, yes, it would, R6 is the only zone that would allow something like this, yes. It's not quite, R6 is, would be a fourteen, over fourteen units breaker, so it's about half...
It's a soft R6, but it's an R6 nonetheless.
It is an R6, but it would be about half the density of what could be in an R6, so if it were zoned R6.
You know, one of the things, back to consistency, has been of late, we've been trying to find ways to incorporate this style of property into the larger tracts with residential surrounding it, active adult, fifty-five-plus, that kind of thing, and a good mix, but I think, if we're being consistent, we've had some recently that were six or seven acres that we turned down, Rocky Fork Road, Amalville, places like that, that just felt like we were trying to pile density into a small piece of land. So from a zoning perspective, rezoning it to what would be an R6 is not something I personally think would be favorable.
Well, I mean, it's, you know, I, I, he's right, it's from the standpoint of the smaller single, you know, just townhome-type developments, that is true. We've had some that were mixes with commercial that were approved, as well as some that were mixed with larger, single-family developments that were approved. So, I mean, we've had, we have, I can only give at least one, but there was some commercial and multifamily mix, or townhome mix on, on Morton and Rocky Fork, Amalville. There was, of course, a mixed-use PUD, but, and we've turned, we have turned down some smaller, single, or just townhome projects as well, so. You know, I think long-term, hopefully, we can get the interchange, certainly. A higher density would be expected on something like this, higher density in commercial, too, from a, from a land use plan standpoint. Obviously, the interchange isn't out here yet, but from a long-term land use plan, you would see a mix. Now, doesn't mean a mix on every property, you know, you may have all multifamily projects and then also all commercial projects, too, so. But as far as mixture of uses, you would see, you would see a mixture of uses like that and not necessarily a single family on a partial like this, so.
Are you here representing this development? Give us your name and, and address, please.
Clyde Roundtree, 228 Bluegrass Circle. Thank you for the opportunity to represent this project. As far as the logic behind the development, we just kind of walked that through, because right now, it's, it's in that, the twenty-four gateway study that allows for both the multifamily and the commercial, so we wanted to make sure there's justification from the land use plan. As far as the commercial, we did look at expanding the commercial further down Enan Springs Road, but that is a, there's no curb cut there, so there's a medium strip, so it's one of, the commercial would have to be a right-in, right-out. We thought that was a prohibitive situation. With the commercial on the corner allows us to do a right-in, right-out, but also allow them to have access to Gamble Lane, and we thought that was important. Location-wise and the lot size, we know we're up against single-family further to the, to the east, so we felt like the townhomes would provide a transition between the commercial and the residential, which I think is consistent typically. And as Kevin said, as this area develops, there will be a higher density, probably closer to the major corridors, and expand into residential as you move further away. As far as the townhomes themselves, you know, we wanted to make them large enough that they would really be supportive of family, so these are larger than average. I mean, they're, they're started at eighteen-hundred square feet or above, seventeen-fifties are minimum size. We provided adequate parking for two in the garage, four in the driveway. We want to make sure there's ample guest spaces, so there's not an issue with parking on the streets, which we know is concern typically with higher-density developments. And allows for a decent amount of green space around the development as well. So all those factors came into why we chose to go this strategy. We're asking for your support in the fact that it is a transitional lot between the residential and the, and the major thoroughfare, and that's what we felt was adequate. However, the thought about the commercial lot expanding further down Enan Springs was considered. We just ran into the hurdle of, it, it gets so far away from the actual, you know, changes in between the two roads that we felt like it would be harder to, to market as commercial with that right-in, right-out scenario. Without them available for any questions, but that's the logic behind the development, why we chose to do townhomes. We just wanted to make them larger so they're more consistent with residential homes further to the east.
Okay. Any other questions?
One of the areas where I've tried to be consistent, and I think we as a group are being consistent, and we achieved it on the last project, and that's maintaining that natural tree line buffer. I think that was done very well on the last project, and they actually even added a secondary row of evergreens. If you look on this lot to the east where it abuts the single family, you've got a very large area of mature trees, and it appears to me we should try to maintain that buffer at least to the east, if not also to the north.
And again, they would, would typically be required a fifteen-foot buffer, Type C. They have requested as part of this PRD request to do a, basically a Type A buffer, which would still be a buffer, but adding a fence as well in lieu of the fifteen-foot landscape area. Of course, certainly maintaining the existing trees would be preferred, or, because obviously they're there and they're mature, versus, you know, planting something that's six feet tall when it's planted or whatever, takes some time to grow. They've indicated the buffer would be there, but they haven't indicated how they would obtain that, I guess, whether it'd be keeping what's there or planting, or a little of both.
Kevin, I see the buffer around, you know, where the homes are and everything, but what about the commercial? Is there, I mean, it's just...
It becomes site planned. If we got to that point, it'd be a site planned.
Yeah, I think their, their plan is to build the townhomes, and that, that commercial out parcel is a future thing, and so most likely, you would end up having, that commercial piece would have to provide a buffer there to the townhomes when they, when, if it gets built.
So in terms of form, if we wanted to require the maintenance of the tree line on the east side of the property, would that be an added condition?
Sure.
Because right now, they want to put a fence instead of the trees.
Well, there would still be the landscaping, but not as much landscaping, five feet less, because you have ten feet versus fifteen, but having a fence as well as the ten feet of landscaping is what they're proposing.
And staff is recommending a Type C?
That's what would be required, yes. Typically, they, I think it was just to give themselves, because these are a little bit larger units, I think they're trying to give themselves enough room to have those units there and still have the parking and everything else, too, so.
Did you want to address, sure, please. Give us your name and address.
Chris McGuire with Hudson Steel Engineering, 2115 Northwest Broad Street. To address the comment regarding trying to maintain the buffers, one of the largest issues kind of twofold. One is to grade out the site. We're gonna have to do some grading work in that area, so it's gonna be hard to maintain those trees. And kind of secondhand, that's really a cedar. It's kind of a cedar forest. It's not a beautiful tree, not a maples and oak trees kind of forest, something that you, that people look at and think is beautiful. It's kind of more of a, a tall cedars with high branches, but we would propose to do some nice evergreens with a, a fence to, in lieu of not being able to keep those. At one point, we had these set back to that thirty-five-foot offset from the edge of pavement that's kind of been the standard in the past. In speaking with staff, they did say that we need to go to thirty-eight feet. It's something that Public Works and I believe Planning has been working on to help keep the parking in...
Sidewalk.
Well, in the sidewalks and out of the road. So a, as we started making some of those changes, these space that we had started kind of getting dwindled down, and we were trying to keep these nice. I mean, some of these single-family townhomes are bigger than the average single-family homes getting built on these six-thousand-square-foot lots. I mean, we're talking about seventeen-fifties the minimum, but a lot of what we're showing is about nineteen-hundred square feet, not counting the two-car garage. So these are some pretty upscale townhomes that have a potential to support the family and for kids going to the schools in the neighborhood. And like I said, some of the green space got ate up a little bit with trying to meet some of these newer requirements, but we asked for a ten-foot instead of fifteen-foot just so we could have a little bit of grass for these people's backyards where they'd have the ability to walk their dog and kind of have their own little grass area in, behind their patios. The buildings have the master down, and then they have a five-foot covered patio... Um, the buildings have the master down, and then they have a five-foot covered patio with a five-foot uncovered patio in the back, uh, which we felt, uh, is something I haven't seen a whole lot of, townhome-wise, so. I think I've said my piece. If, if I can answer any more questions, please let me know.
What about the construction entrance? Are you gonna be utilizing Gamble Lane primarily?
Uh, we, we would work with Public Works and determine what they felt was most sufficient. I would assume that Gamble Lane, uh, probably the first access. That way, we're not impeding the, uh, Enon Springs traffic flow, but we're not getting deep into the residential that goes down Gamble. So, if we keep it as tight as possible, I, I would think that's what Tom would want with Public Works, but, uh, we would work with staff and do wherever they would like. We're not picking on that.
Thank you.
I can't tell from the map, are there sidewalks on Enon Springs and Gamble?
Um, we have a sidewalk currently going from, there's a, in the east side, on the north of, uh, Gamble Lane, there's a, uh, existing sidewalk stub. We're extending that stub all the way to the cemetery at this point. Um, and then I would assume as the commercial development developed, it would have to complete that connection to Enon Springs, which I don't believe actually has a sidewalk across the frontage. But it would at least promote some, uh, pedestrian connectivity from the east to the potential commercial development.
Yeah, and I think you'll have kids walking to school as well. You're, you're very close.
Yeah, uh, and I, I would think that they might need to make some improvements on Enon Springs farther north, for that to probably be too feasible, but, I mean, uh, this, we've also got a bus stop, uh, proposed at the first access on Gamble, so, uh, kids would have the ability to wait for the bus and a little covered bus stop.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Where is the bus stop?
Right there by the cemetery.
Does not sound like I'm gonna get a motion on this. Is there some, is there some...
If there's more information that you'd like, you, maybe something like that?
You could defer it and ask for more information, or if that's, just kind of give options.
Well, since we don't have a motion on the floor, is this consistent with our comprehensive plan?
Yes.
I do have a question. It just came up. What is the, is there fencing around the dog park, and that's visible from Gamble Lane? What does that look like?
I think there, yeah, there is fencing there. Um, certainly would be visible. Um, I don't know if I know what type of fencing is proposed.
I'll see this picture of a dog park area.
There's a picture with some, kind of looks like a, it's kind of hard to tell, the picture, it's such a small scale. So, I don't know what type of fence is, they might answer that, but... Some of it looks like chain link in that picture, but not all of it, though.
Does anybody know?
Sure is. Were you gonna let us know about the fencing?
Yeah.
Okay, come on up.
I'm back. Um, the fencing will probably just be a black-coated chain link fence. Um, when we come through with the site plan, we'll provide an enhanced landscaping package along that fence that'll, uh, that'll block the majority of the view shed of just a fence along Gamble Lane. Um, it's a little deceptive on the site plan, how far off of the pavement it actually is. Um, it's a, it's a good ways off the edge of pavement, but we, we'd be happy to screen that.
Yeah, it does look like it's right on the road, like right in the front, and I don't, I wouldn't recommend chain link, but, um...
Well, I mean, I, I'm open to a different type of fencing. Black chain link is normally just kind of the most maintainable, and, um, it's, it's good for being able to see through and make sure that nobody's on the other side of the fence. But, uh, we, we, we'd be happy to do an enhanced landscape package along the south side of that to buffer Gamble Lane. And we can add that to the book.
Yeah. No, I know you want to see through it, but I even like the fence that, I mean, it's probably just an example on here. It looks like an iron, iron fence. Looks nice.
All right, Kevin, uh, you've heard the discussion concerning type A versus type C. Is it still staff's recommendation for type C?
I mean, that's what, uh...
That's what's required?
That would be my, my preference, if it's possible. It may not be possible, just because of, at this density at least, it might not be possible. Uh, and I think, I understand what you're saying about the existing trees may not be exactly what you would want to have as a buffer too, but still having something different probably works out, but... I mean, I appreciate that they are proposing a fence in addition to, so it does provide some additional visual screening, at least from the backyards of those homes.
What type of fence is proposed?
I don't think, other than a fence, I don't think we know exactly there either. I'm sure it's, I assume probably a wooden privacy fence.
Well, we wouldn't want a wood privacy fence. I think we'd want a vinyl.
I don't know, I don't know, they don't, they actually don't state, just the fence, so. Certainly, if you want a six-foot vinyl fence, I mean, that's certainly something you can add.
What's an example of what can go in a C?
Kevin?
For C2? Um, most commercial uses can go in a Z2. Um, it's, um, it's general services commercials, what it's called. So, any type of office or retail type use, restaurants, gas stations, um, anything like that. Couldn't have, uh, any type of manufacturing or warehousing, and you couldn't have any type of automotive services or auto, automotive sales, uh, but...
You'd have like strip retails, or banks, or restaurants, or gas stations.
It could be pretty wide open, other than those types of specific uses, from a commercial standpoint, anything commercial.
And to be fair, on, on fronting on Enon Springs with the, uh, graystone, it's gonna have quite a bit of that. We protected a lot of it for that reason.
So, ten minutes earlier, if this was fitting with...
With our comprehensive plan, I'm assuming that the ESO is within that comprehensive plan, correct?
Yeah, the, the Enon Springs overlay was kind of a, as a way to try and implement the, the kind of one of those twenty-four, like I said, it's in the character that that, between Old Nashville Highway to the interstate, and we've carried it over to on the west side, where we annexed that area, to the west side as well.
So, right, so, we could meet the paper requirements of what's within the ESO, but for the ones that have been here longer than me, uh, do we meet the intent of what's in that ESO? And if this ever becomes a big corridor through Smyrna, uh, I mean, you can see the potential here with the remaining R1, um, all that stuff could get flipped to townhomes. Do you, is, is that the intent of what that ESO stands for and means?
No, but I'll let Kevin...
Well, I think the idea of the Enon Springs overlay was that you would have, sort of a mixture of commercial uses, uh, along the frontage, but that you would also have some multifamily in there, some higher density. Similar to what you see, I mean, the idea behind this, we didn't reinvent the wheel on this. It was Medical Center Parkway in Murfreesboro. I mean, that's kind of that idea, where you have some commercial, obviously a lot, tremendous amount of commercial, and, and different types of commercial, but then also have some higher-density housing as you get away from your main corridors. Um, and so, I think, from a big-picture standpoint, this area is in that, from a land use plan, is in that, within that. And so, how you implement that, as far as where, where that boundary, we didn't set up, it's, we're gonna do commercial the first two hundred feet of date, the depth of the lot or anything like that, it was, it's gonna be looked at on kind of a case-by-case basis as property is developed.
But also, as part of the ESO, we were talking about the types of finishes and...
Certainly, oh, yeah, obviously from a, yes.
Elevations and asking for enhanced...
Right.
That way, and, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but when I'm looking at the elevations, as far as what we're looking at, as far as the towns go, it appears that it would meet design review, as far as what were those requirements that we talked about.
Yes, yes, and I, I met with the developer a couple of different times on that, and they, they did, they made a concerted effort to try and meet our requirements from the, the aesthetic standpoint of those townhomes.
And the same would be true for what developed commercially too, on the front portion of this.
Whatever comes in with there, yes, they would have to meet those requirements.
So, anything along this corridor would have to meet the ESO requirements, and then it's how we build it out from a commercial to maybe higher density, to maybe medium density and, and whatnot from this roadway.
Right.
And Kevin, graystone, that is, um, kind of the same density is what was approved, right?
Um, there's a mix of single-family and townhomes in that development. Um, and we did, as, as Mark said, we kept, there's a lot of area that's reserved as commercial area in the frontage. So, they're, that's why they're so far off the road where they're building, is because we kept that front area, uh, commercial. From a density standpoint, I can't remember exactly what their overall density is, but, um, I think overall, it's a fairly dense project, though, because there's, our townhomes in there as well as the single-family.
Parking's in there too, though.
And there's some, there's some condo, there's a condominium project as part of it as well, yes. So, it's, it's a fairly dense project because of that. It's, it's kind of, different pieces of it aren't quite as dense, because there's some single-family as well, so.
That was in thinking that we were gonna have an interchange there.
Sure.
T-Dot has thrown us a big wrench and said we may not now get interchange there. And instead, looking at convenience lanes and secondary roads along the interstate, instead of accessing interstate. We don't know where that's gonna go, but that, in February, they were here...
Right.
And talked about scuttling the idea of putting an interchange there for a ton of people.
Yeah, they've gotta get the convenience lanes built. Are we still moving forward with the connection here? To... Wait, I'm thinking the same thing, right?
McEwen?
Yeah, McEwen, thank you.
Yes. I mean, that's still something that's a, it's an approved, um, I was, uh, Austin, all of the jurisdictions have agreed to it. It's a couple of jurisdictions in Williamson County were not. The county mayor and I think one of the city mayors had some concerns about taking it to his council or to his county commission, so I don't know if they formally approved, all of them haven't. I know some of them have, so, uh, it's certainly gonna be, we're, we're in the process of, we've already added it to our thoroughfare plan. Uh, Bruthford County, I know, is in the process of upbidding their thoroughfare plans, but things can be added there as well, so, um, it's, it's on everybody's plan, but as far as, we haven't...
It's not tied to an interchange?
It's not tied to an interchange, right. It wouldn't, I would think we wouldn't want it to be tied to an interchange, just from the standpoint of, I think we need that roadway even without the interchange.
Yeah.
Um, it helps to justify the interchange, in my opinion, because it makes that interchange a regional interchange, because it's, there's a direct connection to Williamson County and, and the interchange in McEwen sixty-five, so.
Okay.
We sure went down the rabbit hole on this one.
All right, well, let's come out. So, we've had some more discussion, um, and I'll ask again for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the staff comments.
Okay, and is that, yeah, just for clarification, are we type A with a fence buffer, or type C buffer?
With what type of fence?
And what type of fence, if we're going that way?
Yeah, we'd mentioned that they do the, the six-foot vinyl fence is what we kind of mentioned.
With a type A buffer?
Right.
Is that...
Right, well, I'm assuming that, I don't know if that's her motion.
Would that be your motion?
Absolutely.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion and a second, further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Aye.
We are now on to preliminary plaids. First one, Fox Meadows, forty-eight fifty-two Rocky Fork Road. Owner, developer, John Mitchell Burns.
Yeah, this is the preliminary plaid for the Fox Meadows, uh, PRD on Lee Road. Uh, it's eighty-eight lots, forty-seven point three acres. Uh, it's three tracts of land altogether, they have forty-seven point three acres. We had several, um, standard comments, um, that would all need to remain discussed. There's one, I do want to specifically talk about is on the thoroughfare plan is, Lee Road is a collector, and they are dedicating their required right-of-way there for that. Um, and the fire flow requirements are standard requirements there. Um, and there are some off-site improvements here for them as well. The CUD has indicated that they'll have to do to, to meet that requirement. We had one comment regarding, uh, comment number six, um, with regards to, there was just, the fire department had raised a concern about the, uh, kind of, that western end of Dove Shell Way, where they're showing kind of a cul-de-sac there, where they're, or stubbing into the adjoining property with a cul-de-sac there, it would be required to meet their auto turn requirements. They have shown that now. Fire department still needs to look at that to confirm it meets their requirements. Um, comment number seven, uh, Jordan Lane is a twenty-foot right-of-way county road, um, that's one lane and not a safe road. And so, as part of their PRD approval, they were required to remove that, and there are, there's a couple, there's the houses on either end of it that do still access it, but most of the people, it's to cut through road. And so, uh, they would be removing that, and they have shown that now. Uh, comment number eight, the lighting plan has been submitted, so we can remove that one. Uh, comment number nine has been addressed, there's no show receipts referencing the Murfreesboro planning commissions, they've taken those off. Uh, comment number ten, um, some of the, there were several lots as part of the pud approval that would back up to the current Rocky Fork Road in the future. Um, Rocky Fork Road would connect to McEwen. Uh, they were required to have some, some landscaping along that area, kind of between the backs of those homes and that roadway, and they have shown that now, and, and they had the, some lot numberings were wrong, and so, and then in their notes, they fixed that, so we can remove comment ten. Um, comment number eleven, some of their open space that they had shown as usable, uh, was, had some pretty steep slopes to it, and would be partially used for detention, at least temporary detention, as, and in some of their flood areas, and so, um, they have changed that around, and so, they've, they're kind of, they've addressed the comment, basically moving some of their areas that they designated as open space, and so, they, they're still meeting their requirements, just in a different area now. And so, we can remove comment eleven. Uh, comment twelve would still need to remain, there's a landscape buffer and a drain, within a drainage easement, so that needs to be corrected. Um, comment number thirteen, we just, they're not showing any improvements or anything within that right-of-way, that future right-of-way of Rocky Fork Road, uh, but just, I just wanted to include that as one of our comments. Um, and then fourteen and fifteen are CUD comments we need to keep. So, we would need to keep, um, comments one through six, and then twelve through fifteen. And with those comments, staff would recommend approval. With the PRD, yes, sir.
I will then entertain a motion.
Move to approve with staff comments.
Motion to approve with staff comments from Miranda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Matt. A motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor of approving this motion? All in favor of approving this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion's approved. We are now on to site plans. Topra American Corporation, Smyrna Plant Phase One. Of course, phase 10, 7735 Florence Road. Owner, developer, Industrial Development Board of Rutherford County.
This is another extension on to the existing Topra building, about 121,179 square feet on to the existing 238,000 square foot building. This addition is located in the rear of the building and to the north, towards the back of the building. Access to the site would not change off of Florence Road. They are showing a bit of a extension to their parking area in front of the building along Florence and that access road. So that is the only modification that would change on the front portion of the building. Vehicle use area for the site, an additional 7,195 square feet for that parking area. And that would require an additional 576 square feet landscaping. They're showing for 1,231 square feet. Required parking of 80 spaces and they're showing for 117, and that does require five handicap parking spaces, which they are shown. Landscape plan shows new plant landscaping around the proposed parking lot extension area. The parking lot extension is located north of existing employee parking lot with the proposed landscaping to the north and east of that area. The architectural evasions show an entirely metal building consistent with the existing building. The designer view does allow metal to be used as a primary material on industrial buildings where there's no visibility from arterial streets. The major thoroughfare plan does designate Florence Road as a minor arterial street, however. The designer view does permit planning commission to vary from the materials listed in a case by case situation as long as the decision does not contradict the goal set forth in this manual. Standard comments, one through five would all remain at this time. We had a couple of staff comments. Common one is regarding the fire flow would be 2,000 gallons per minute, 20 PSI. Comment two, the proposed sanitary super pump station shall be private. And then comment three is regarding the designer view manual contradiction. So once again, designer view does permit metal as a material as long as it's not visible from a arterial street, which Florence Road is. But y'all do have that ability to override that requirement as long as it is consistent with what the manual would set forth as. We have another staff comment, just because that is what designer view states and that's simply what we're presenting here tonight. The existing building is entirely metal, so what they're showing would be consistent with the existing building.
If we'd done that, would it be something that I could remember right off the bat? And one other expansion, was it?
Steel technology.
Thank you, that's what I, thanks.
Yeah, just to the south of us.
Yeah, okay. All right, questions or comments?
Staff recommendation to approve?
Staff recommends approval with the conditions. Obviously, it's up to you, what do you want to do with comment number three?
Looking for your recommendation. I'll make a motion to approve with staff comment.
Okay.
Is that?
With, with.
Designer view.
Allowing the metal, yeah, just like we did next door.
Okay. I have a motion to approve including the metal elevations. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion. All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. Okay, next we have a zoning ordinance amendment, zoning ordinance amendment to Article 3, Section 3.120 F3 year expiration period for site plans.
Yeah, this is a proposed change to the zoning ordinance. This is something that Mr. Peach asked me to look at and he had.
I'm sorry, who did?
Mr. Peach did.
Okay. So he's got this started. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
This is his fault. This is something that is kind of consistent with what we had done when we, one of the things we changed on our subregs back in October with regards to state law and divesting of development rights. Now, our, our current zoning ordinance, basically a site plan approval is good for one year. Unless you have to get a building permit within one year. There is an opportunity for them to request an extension of up to six months if they've submitted construction plans to us. As long as they ask for that before that expiration date occurs. And so to be consistent with what state law is now with regard to three-year vesting period, we, the recommendation would be to change the one-year expiration to three years. And then removing the possibility of staff extending the approval for six months. Just keep it at the three years, so. Essentially, that's what this change would do.
And you're doing this to make sure we're consistent with state law?
Being consistent with state law.
Sure. Thank you, sir. Other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Just a quick question. We're striking language at the end of that statement around the requests for extension. I didn't hear you mention specifically why we did that. Are we not, are we, are we saying we're no longer allowed to require a six-month extension? Is that what I'm reading?
Yeah, there were, currently they're, it, it, when I first started here, it was, there was a one-year approval and that was it. And one year is not enough many times. Sometimes there's, because there's some, some sites require a pretty extensive amount of grading. Or sometimes there's delays in getting financing approved and different things. And so sometimes it is difficult to get a permit within a year, a building permit within a year. And so we, we did allow for that up to six-month extension. When, you know, if they are moving forward with the project, they just haven't been given a permit yet. And so taking that out now because there is a three-year vesting period, I think three years, if you haven't got a permit in three years, probably not going to pursue the project. You've dropped the project, you're not going to do it. And so I don't see any reason to have a six-month.
Yeah, I mean, to me that kind of eliminates the need for an extension. Now we're at three and a half years versus three and we're.
It's twice.
A year and a half more than what we have now.
Could have allowed in currently.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Good, Matt?
Yeah, I moved to approve.
Thank you. I have a motion from Matt to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Miranda. Further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This zoning ordinance amendment is approved. We are now on to the July bond review report.
All right, and so I'll go through this. We got several this month. The first two I'll handle together is patent retreat, phase two, section one, and patent retreat, phase one. Both of those phases of that development have been paved. And so we can reduce both of those and begin their one-year maintenance period. Cedar Hill, section two, phase three, this is the end of their maintenance period. They are working and, and talked with them actually today. They're, they're still trying to get, they're trying to get everything cleaned up and finished, so they can release that one. There's a couple of things they still gotta do, but they're getting probably close. So most likely we'll be releasing this one, but if they don't get done by July 26th, we would extend it three months. Point subdivision, this is the commercial portion of that area there. We say two out of the 12 lots have been built. I think we've had site plans approved on two. Maybe we've had permits issued. This is, and so we have had that one two years. They, the developer has indicated they will be wanting to go ahead and pave. And we need to work through that if we want to allow that with still several lots to be built on it. But we would recommend a six-month extension on that one. Buckingham Place, section one, this one's at the end of the maintenance period. There, there's a few little items there to clean up there, so hopefully we can get that one cleaned up and release that one. But again, if not, we, a three-month extension would be all I would want to recommend on that one. Hunter's Point Annex, section three, phase one. This is one they're trying to, the developer's trying to finish up some grading on some lots that'll allow for him to finish up the pond, repairs to the detention pond that need to happen. So I'm okay with a six-month extension on that one. He's looking to have that done in the next three to four months. Woodcrest, section four, this was one that has not gone to maintenance yet. They are built out. I did not receive an update from the developer on this one, so I would, would not recommend more than three months on that one because they do need to. They've paved all the other sections in there. I don't know why they didn't pave this one. So they need to get that one finished. Villages of Green Tree, section three, had a couple of things on their punch list. They did, I had got an update from the inspector yesterday and they are, everything's complete now, so we can release that one. And then Buckingham, section two, phase one, similar situation as Buckingham, phase one or section one. This is the end of the maintenance period. And they just hopefully they get those final items cleaned up so we can release that one. Otherwise, a three-month extension on that one. That's what I have.
And we'll communicate with Mr. Constable about the need to finish the roadway, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we've heard the bond review report. Do you have any questions? And I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the bond review report.
Got a motion to approve it? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second. Further discussion. All those in favor of approving the bond review report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved. We are now on to staff comments or other business.
I don't have anything else.
Counselor?
Don't forget our Fourth of July celebration, actually it's the third, but our Independence Day celebration begins at 5 o'clock.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. And there'll be food and fun for all of us.
You got your mama home, didn't you?
She is home. She, she, she came home and we're excited about that. And so God is good.
Very good. All right. Anything from the commission? Charles?
Yeah, question. One of the speakers said that there are 11,800, I believe, homes in the pipeline?
That's overall, some of those have been built, you know, that's the developments that are active.
But plus or minus that's approved but not yet.
Not yet. Some of those are in developments that are under construction that has, permits haven't issued in some of those. Some of those are, haven't even begun doing anything yet. So, but that's the whole mix, yes.
And do you keep a running tally of that?
We actually did update it a couple of weeks ago and it's gone up a little bit. It's, but it's, because we took, there's a few we took off that have been completed and then we had a few more to add. So it's still on that same ballpark.
Linwood's been on there for like eight or nine years.
Oh, yeah. That's 1,500, that's 1,500 of them right there.
Yeah, just because they're on there doesn't mean they're happening.
Right, exactly. Yeah, a lot of those are developments that have been approved and haven't done anything like Linwood. And then we have some that are, obviously they're, they're building homes then, so.
Okay. Anybody else? Mark, thank you for chairing for me last month and.
That knee's better. You're all healed up.
Thank you to the commission for doing a great job. Yeah, I got a new knee and I'm back to running marathons soon, so.
All right.
Not really. We stand to turn.